Good evening. It is Wednesday, June 29, 2022. Welcome to the Town of Carmel Town Board informational meeting on Swan Cove. I call this meeting to order, and if everyone will please stand in place to pledge, Councilman Shannell will lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a moment of silence to remember all our men and women serving the force and the armed forces overseas.
Thank you. So I said I call this meeting to order. So this meeting is an informational meeting about the Swan Cove project. Just a little background quickly. So the property was purchased, the initial piece, right, March 2018? The bank property, that was August 2019. In 2020, a geotechnical runoff flood hazard report were completed by Inside Engineering in anticipation of having the conceptual, and you see the two final conceptual drawings out there on the easels and the one on the computer. They did nineteen borings, they did three soil samples, all that soil and boring samples were sent out to the lab. So in that soil, there was the discovery of pesticides, lead, mercury, acetone, other chemicals, PCBs, all that were above the limit that is allowed by New York State DEC. Then in December of 2021, an abandoned oil tank was found underground by the old Chamber Building. So Duchess Environmental remediated that tank and the soil. Based on, that was completed in February. Based on that, when we started the new board in January, we decided that we should investigate, are there more oil tanks? Are there more hazards in grounds? So we had New York Leak Detection perform a ground penetrating radar survey, and they found some hidden objects under the ground, some anomalies, and they found one additional oil tank next to the bank. Then in March, they completed that. We also did higher hydro environmental solutions. We retained them to do a Phase Two environmental site assessment survey and to go through the report that Inside Engineering had originally done as part of the conceptual. That's who prepared these drawings, working with Supervisor Schmidt and the previous board. So they went through that work, and Hydro Environmental Solutions also did some more investigating into the anomalies that were found by doing more borings, taking samples from the ground. They also did groundwater, they also looked for groundwater. They did groundwater testing also. All of that was sent out to the lab also. So when they completed their study in May of 2022, like I said, they located the abandoned tank on the property that still belongs to the bank that joins our park. They also investigated the historic fill and the demolished buildings, not just the Chamber Building, but there's demolished, demolished small residences that were up against the water. So from that, the spill report was done to New York State for the oil tank, the historic fill and the Hydro Environmental Solutions reported to us that they did not think the presence of the lead, the mercury, the zinc, and other metals was of significant concern to the health of the public or the environment. And what they suggest is that any planned future excavation or ground intrusion work at the site, that we do proper demolition and follow New York State DEC soil regulations. They call that findings, soil analytical results is what they call that. So the underground anomalies were all that were located with the ground penetrating RayVar. They were surveyed and investigated. They did not find any other oil tanks except for the one over by the bank. They did the analysis of all that soil and went through the results that came from Insights report. There was minimal soil and groundwater impacts is what they found from the various chemicals and contaminants that we have on the Swan Cove site. There are some areas of concern. Hydro Environmental recommended that any playground that is built on the site, that we should layer with certified topsoil and mulch to protect against, because of the presence of lead, mercury, and zinc in the soil to protect the public. There's also, you know, the discussion of doing the remediation of that soil, digging that up, or maybe doing a chemical resistant membrane. The RFP went out for the final design proposal. So there's architects and engineers that have that now that are going to come back with their plan on what the design is. And in that plan will be how they plan to deal with the petroleum, the PCBs, the metals that are in the soil. So we have our town engineer here, we have Jack, Representative here to answer whatever questions we can. So now to the public, you get three minutes. We're going to go around like Supervisor Schmidt had done before. We're going to go up and down the road. That way, everybody that wants to speak has three minutes. You can speak, ask your question, and we'll do our best to explain it.
Was there a signup sheet?
No.
Anybody on this row?
Oh, Rich, did you want to say, did you want to say?
Yes, everything.
Did you want to say anything?
I have a question about the plans, and I brought this up at the last meeting. The fishing pier is very close to the kayak launch, and lines travel. And since that's such a small area, I was hoping that the fishing pier would be more on the left so that it wouldn't interfere with kayaks launching and landing, because you can't always see the lines. And getting hooked is not fun. That was my comment.
So all of those things will be ironed out in? Oh, thank you, Senator. All of your concerns will be ironed out in the final design. This, right now, we haven't gotten back. We don't know how much this is going to cost, how long it's going to take, how they plan on dealing with the contaminants that they found in the soil. So yes, that's not set in stone, that design. That is just so that they can do, so that we can get proposals on, this is what we envision, or what, you know, possibly is envisioned, but it's not set in stone. So yes, we can move that over, or maybe there isn't a fishing pier, maybe it's off the promenade, or whatever you call it there.
Supervisor, if I may, a lot of what we, a lot of the design was basically for the structural component of what we want to do, and a lot of the details of the park are still relatively fluid. So we can move things around, but we needed to get this design phase in. So, and we can move things around and adjust them as we go, but for the most part, the structural part of this design is what we sent out the RFP for. And I'm sure, Mr. Supervisor, there'll probably be a few more of these meetings, you know, for the public to comment and give input as to, as we get, you know, more and more into the weeds of the design and the aesthetics, we will do that.
Yes, definitely going to have a discussion.
Row by row.
We're going row by row.
Row by row, Annie, second row. Does anybody in the second row want to need to speak?
Hi, my name is Tony Paul. Now, the last time I was here was, what was it, fall? The fall of last 21. How far have we gotten as far as, now, you'll forgive me. This may not be where you want to be talking about, but is there a line item budgeted? And, you know, and the plans for what's going on with everything here?
There was money carried over from last year that wasn't spent in recreation.
All right. Now, the other question is, because the last time I had asked that same question, they said, well, the surplus money went into the general fund. Shouldn't it be a separate line item for that?
Well, we have monies put aside for the Swan Cove pier, but we don't have, per se, line item by line item, because we're not 100% sure what's going in it.
So how do you keep track of what your expenditures are?
Of what?
What's costing to do everything.
You mean already spent?
Yeah.
Or future? Already spent.
Oh, we know how much is already spent.
Already spent is in that line, but we don't have, like, if someone came to us right now and says, how much is this park going to cost to build? We don't know. We don't know, because we had to get all of the information from the engineers.
And also, that's what the design, that's what the designer.
Yeah, that's what the design, because now we're at the design phase. So we had to get, we had to know what we were dealing with first. We just don't want to go and build something, and then in two years, it not be any good. It's going to be built properly. And we had to wait to hear back from the engineer, and then we hired excess also. Oh, you could tell him that. Oh, yes, and there's also, what'd you say? Yeah, there was borrowing for the properties as well. So we do have some monies. It's not going to be enough. But once we can dwell down, once the RFPs come back, and we kind of see, okay, this is how much it's going to cost. We, what we did right now, from there, from the fall to now, is we kind of, we took those three plans, and we're down to one plan.
Okay.
So as you notice, like, we're not doing two bridges, we're not doing three fountains, you know, inside the water. There's things that were taken out, there's things that stayed, there's things that was adjusted, that can be adjusted more. But as far as how much is it going to cost to build the wall, we don't know yet.
Right. Now, I've seen that you added, from the last time, it was 83 spaces, now it's 93.
Correct.
I also just wanted to add, and this may be along the basis of your question, I think, is financial. So as you probably know, the county and the town, we've gotten an allotment from the county, but we also have money that came directly to the town. And we are envisioning using some of that money towards the fit out of the park. We have a number that we've talked about, but I don't think we've, we finally landed on that. I think we're waiting to effectively see, you know, what the cost is going to be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Going back to the parking, there's 10 to 11 spaces added. I noticed most of them were where the fountain was, so some of that green space is being taken away.
Yes, so.
You can tell that the fountain's not going.
Yeah, so in this rendition that they came up with, when I came on board, I didn't like where you see it says, remove the plaques and the dedicated trees and the fountain. I really don't agree with moving those trees. So I can't tell you that those spaces are still going to be there when this is done.
Well, does that mean that then you're only going to have those spaces in the I'm sorry, and take more green away?
Yeah, so we're going to wait for, no, we're going to try to keep, well, I don't say, I'm going to try to keep it as green as possible.
Oh, okay, good.
Um, you know, and I'm along with Mike. It's that, you know, that number one was the memorial trees and plaques at the site that need to be relocated. I disagree with that also. You don't move memorials most of the time. They're there, and that's where people go. That's where the design, the design team is going to have to come up, okay, we want these many spaces. Where can we get them without losing the green?
Right.
And it may be impervious, like you said.
The impervious, Richard Franzen, our engineer, can speak to the impervious.
Because I know some merchants want more parking than greenery, so that's why I'm concerned too.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Well, it's a park. It's not a parking lot.
Yeah. We're trying to do a very happy medium, because we do need parking, but we also need the green space. I mean, to me, that, I voted to vote for a park and to help with the downtown parking. Anybody else on row two?
I just want to add to what the board was saying, and maybe address some questions, and then I'll get off the dais, because I'm really not supposed to be up here. So.
We invited you.
I came up, I wasn't invited, but I'm here now. So the plan you see there was a conceptual plan that was put out there. It's conceptual only. So some of the questions that you're asking about parking, and some of the questions about the dock, you know, those are still going to be fleshed out when we meet and pick a consulting engineer right now. As Supervisor mentioned, there is a proposal that's out there. It was released on May 25. It was sent out to about 18 different consulting firms that do this type of work. We'll get an answer back on July 8, and we'll have at least a number for that to know what it's going to cost to, see what the vision is to make this happen. Part of the vision that's going to happen there, they've been given all the information, they've been given that Phase Two report. They know that there's flooding issues down there. They understand that those are the issues that are going on with the project. That's what that consulting engineer is going to be tasked to do, is to take this conceptual design and move it forward, that it becomes a living, breathing, functional park. To answer your question about the parking, there is a balance that needs to be struck, not just because we want green versus gray, or gray versus green, right? It's a regulatory thing. So there's, New York State has MS4 requirements, stormwater requirements that DEP does, because this is in a downtown area. We have to meet certain criteria. So that's going to dictate what goes on green and gray wise. So yes, when Insight looked at it, they looked at it with that in mind, you know, but it may have to be tweaked a little bit and give us more green, or, you know, we'll be okay with the amount of gray we have. So again, that's not set in stone. So I just wanted to clarify, again, this was conceptual. This is what was provided to consulting engineers to provide design services for it. They're going to design a park. As the board said, it's still going to be a little work. We're going to meet with that, if once a consultant is selected, we will meet with that consultant, and we will say, okay, here are the pieces of the puzzle we want. That one doesn't show a fountain, we want to keep the fountain, right? We want to keep the trees, you know, that doesn't show the trees. We want to keep some of these features. We walk the site with them, and we go with it from there. So that's kind of where that's at, and, you know, it's not going to address, I know some of you folks, I think you, sir, were a kayaker. You were worried about having kayak launches there. There was concerns about having the fishing pier too close to kayak launches. That'll all be thought of and thought of as part of moving forward with the project. So along with the folks who in the commercial district who want to have parking, right? Along with the Recreation Department that wants to have, or is going to need a building to be able to do some of the work they have there. So.
Rich, before you go, would you speak to the rest of the regulatory, the Army Corps of Engineers, and just quick?
This gentleman had a question. Can I answer that first, or do you want me to answer yours?
This is going to be an odd question, but how many of you up there are kayakers?
I am not an avid kayaker, believe me, at all. I have been on a kayak, yeah. And a paddleboard, but.
The reason I say that is because if you are a kayaker, you would know exactly what you need from that standpoint, instead of, you know, thinking about what may or may not be needed.
But it's not, it's not a kayak park. It's a town park.
I understand that.
I understand everyone's focus is on the thing that they are focused on, and I appreciate your enthusiasm about kayaking, and it's a wonderful thing. And I have kayaks at our house, and we have those boards and all that, but thank you for your comments.
It's a general question.
Right, yeah, and we still have all of the notes from when you all spoke. The kayak team came up and spoke about it. We have all of that, and all of that has been taken into consideration with the 2,000 other requests. So, yes, we have heard you. We still have it written all down. You know, anybody that's come forward with something, it has been talked about, I can assure you.
We're just not kayakers. My husband and I don't have lake rights. So we go down to that park very often and walk around, sit by the water. So it's just not kayaking we're concerned about. We just don't want all parking like some of the merchants want. No, this is the last waterfront that May Pack has, the public waterfront.
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be a park that we can enjoy the lake, exactly.
Anyone else on row two? Moving to row three.
Susie, can I just add to the gentleman's question earlier about a line item budget? Once the design plan is put in place and the RFPs come back, we'll have a better idea of how much all our different aspects are going to cost. And then we'll have a better idea of what the budget will be, and we'll agree on what the budget's going to be and try and, you know, work within those parameters. Some things will maybe be added, some things will be changed, some things may be cut. But until we get to that point, we won't know the exact value of what it's going to cost. Thank you.
Annie, row three?
Yes.
Thank you.
He's row four.
Good evening. My name's Peter Gebhardt. I was at the prior meeting. I looked at the Hydro Environmental Solutions report dated May of 22. Supervisor Cusari summarized it very well, that there showed volatile compounds and semi-volatiles. See paragraph 7.2.2. Soil quality samples were included there, and also in 7.2.3 groundwater samples. 7.2.4 insight test borings on December 20 also showed lead, mercury on boring 16 exceeding SCOs. SVCOs also at boring two. Paragraph nine recommends playground area and remove abandoned underground storage tank. Future evaluation will require proper handling of Future evaluation will require proper handling of debris and historic filth. So the question is, with this being now spoken about by two engineering firms, what will be the cost for this 1.7 acre site? There will be a cost benefit only for immediate Six End businesses and some who may want a very small park in Maypack Hamlet. Kayaking will be dangerous on Lake Maypack with motorboats. There's a case in Lake George that we can bring to mind that everybody probably knows about from a Putnam resident that had a problem with motorboats and canoeing. Summary, this site plan should be downsized for parking only. This is per Mike Barelli, former town board member that went on record for that. The Carmel Hamlet, Maypack Falls and Lake Seekor taxpayers should not need to fund this project. I want to finish by speaking about the inflation impact on taxes and the need to complete non-discretionary projects. I spoke with the Supervisor Cusari and he pointed out to me that Carmel has some non-discretionary projects that are in dire need of attention. So we only have so much money to spend. And I think that if this is for the benefit of the businesses on Six End, then it should be a parking lot. We deeply, some, we desperately need some industry and business expansion. I see many vacant spaces in our hamlet of Carmel shopping areas. And I took a couple pieces of paper from the business section of the New York Times and basically it says that, and this affects us all and we're the taxpayers. Stocks were down 23% since January 1st. Mortgage rates were up to over 6%. So this means people who are on fixed incomes, who are going to pay for a discretionary park, are gonna have to dig deeper into their wallets. All right? And one last thing was that brace yourself for the drop. As many people drain their savings accounts to cover rising expenses, a fiscal cliff nears. And the town knows this because what we are able to do, according to New York State, is we're able to raise the taxes 1% plus the cost of inflation. That was good a number of years ago when inflation was 1%, but now inflation is 7%. So if we have to raise taxes 7 or 8%, it's gonna be a very hard sell to the public. That's my comment. And then I have my last comment, and if you need her to call in on the phone and speak, or I can just read her comment.
You got another minute, Mr. Gibhardt?
Okay. Given the current economic situation and recent findings of hazardous waste at the Swan Cove site, would you please comment if consideration has been given to putting the project on hold and/or downsizing the project? Also, what have your efforts been to procure grants as it was done with the Carmel Hamlet's revitalization? Does this project qualify to use any COVID funds allocated to the community?
Thank you very much. That was, that was a lot, Mr. Gibhardt.
I stand in my three minutes.
You did a very great, a very good job. Thank you, sir. So, so about the parking, okay, it is a park. It's not a parking lot. It's a town park, just like Hamlet Park. And if you've been to the, the farmer's market or any of the events that they have at Chamber Park, you'll see that it's overflowing with cars. There's not enough parking now for an event. So it's, it's really, I know that you don't want to pay for parking for the businesses in the Hamlet of Mahopac, but it's not a parking lot for them, sir. It's a park, it's a park. It's parking for people enjoying the lake and enjoying, you know, this, this beautiful town. And the COVID, there is money for the COVID. There was grants that were applied for previously. I, I think it was the, the same type of grant that the Hamlet had gotten before. It's the revitalization grants, and I think there is money that was allocated through grants. There were several, several different grants that were applied for.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, in, just briefly on that, this is a waterfront, lakefront property that there's not any other like it. And it would be foolish for us as a town to put a parking lot on the lake. I mean, you know, there's so many people that come up to me all the time and ask me about, you know, and there is a dichotomy between the business owners want more parking and the residents who are paying for it want a park. And we're gonna come to a, a medium somewhere in between. But again, I, I want people to understand that I've said this over the years. We here in the town of Carmel do not get sales tax revenue from the businesses that are on, in, in this town. We get property taxes from the owners. So whether the, and we want all the businesses, we want the stores to be full and we want them all to prosper. Whether someone makes $100,000 or whether they make $1 million in, in profits, the town does not receive sales tax revenue from that. So this is a park that's gonna be a park for the residents of the town because we've talked about this for a few years. And it's gonna be also beneficial to the residents who want to shop in our local hamlets. It's, it's gonna be a benefit to both. It really is. And, and we're gonna have methods, how to pay for this. And, and one of the things that we've done over the years, Mr. Gibhardt, I'm sure you know, is that we've kept our finances very, very tight. And Moody's has more than any other county around, more than any other town. We have the highest bond rating, 1AA bond rating. So for us to borrow, even at the interest rates that of course have gone up in the last year or so, we pay next to nothing for, for borrowing money. So we will continue to be fiscally prudent in this project and all of the projects. But you can be sure that, you know, we're gonna look at every nickel and penny that's spent.
I believe also that we definitely need more parking in the downtown Maypack area. We want to do whatever we can do to enhance the, the businesses that are there, to get more people to come in and shop. I think this will be a great medium for people to come into the Hamlet. It's gonna beautify the whole downtown area. It's also gonna go in hand in hand with the new master plan. And at that point, we can try and, you know, think of new ideas for parking for the downtown business area. I think this is just such a lovely piece of property. It's centrally located right in this area. I think it should really be, you know, beautiful, held to a, a better beauty through a park than, than a regular parking lot. And I think this plan helps us a little, with a little bit of both. We get some parking and then we also have some nice green space. And I think it's gonna be a great addition. As far as the pricing goes, we'll know more when we got our, our design plan, when that comes through, and then we can figure out what's the most important thing that, that we want to do here as far as, you know, keeping it green, putting in different special specialties.
A couple of comments, sir. There were a lot of things that you mentioned. So first, you know, we are of course very aware of what's going on in the economy and with inflation and so forth. As a matter of fact, you know, a lot of the, the bids that we've received recently have, you know, reflected pretty sizable increases. So we're well aware of what's going on out there. You know, we're well aware of the potential for the economy to reverse course quickly and the impact that that could have on our budgets. I, I also wanted to just mention that, you know, I grew up here. And, you know, back in the early 60s, the piece of property where four brothers sits right now, that became available. And it went up on a vote and the town decided not to buy it. And what a miss that was. This piece of property, this is an extraordinary piece of property, okay? This comes up once in a lifetime. So I'm really very happy that the town purchased this property. It's ours forever. Think about how important that is. And in 50 and 100 years, people will be saying, you know, they had vision. They, you know, they, they bought this, they developed this. As far as the parking and the park, look, it's a balance, you know? And part of the reason for having this presentation tonight is to try to find that balance. And, you know, we're gonna continue to communicate with the public. I also just wanted to mention, just to address one of your other points, this is a town park. It's gonna be open to everyone in the town of Carmel. And all of us, we represent everyone in the town of Carmel. The music events, launching the kayaks, just going there and sitting, it'll be open to everyone in the town. So the concept of this becoming some sort of special district in which the cost should only be borne by a small group of people, I'm opposed to that. I'll, I'll let the other board members, you know, speak to their position on that. The other thing that I wanted to mention too is to just follow up on a point that I made earlier. We are getting a really nice chunk of ARPA money. And what this board has done with that money is it's all dedicated towards, towards infrastructure. And, you know, Bobby and I are both 10512 folks, so we, we sometimes have a different pers, a little bit of a different perspective than the rest of the board. But with that ARPA money, what we've tried to do is, we've tried to make sure that we're focusing that money not just in Mahopac, but, but also in the Hamlet of Carmel as well as Seekor. So, you know, this will be an investment in Mahopac, but we are making investments in, in the other parts of the town too. Thank you.
And unfortunately, a lot of the infrastructure funds that will be used, you're not gonna, you're not gonna visually see. You know, attention, there's, there's, there's quite a, quite a bunch of stuff that needs to be taken care of. And with the ARPA money, now's the time to get it done.
Frank Shanaka, I really didn't come here to speak tonight, but a couple of things came up that are a little concerning. Unfortunately, I think we did miss the boat on borrowing on this. I mean, nobody saw this coming as quickly as it did. I'm talking about interest rates. If this was two years ago, I'd say go out and borrow all you can. But we're beyond that now. So whatever you can do to finance this through grants, through, you know, being as creative as you can, limit the borrowing as much as you can. The other thing is with this parking, what's to say that on any given day, the lot is totally full with shoppers and you can't get to use the park? How do you balance that? Do you have a time limit on how long you can be there? Do you have a security guard? I mean, the issue of parking seems to be, you know, at the top of everybody's list here. And I see it as, as a possible problem if the parking spaces are really not available when you, you want to come for just recreation. Thank you.
Frank, I think you're gonna be very hap, Frank, I think you're gonna be very happy once we finalize the ARPA money that we are gonna be using around town. You'll be, you'll be happy with that.
And also, I just wanted to, also with the parking, people also need to understand there is and also another parking lot right across from CVS. It is not that far. What we're trying to envision is a walking town, just like a Cold Springs. I don't know if anybody's gone to Cold Springs. You park blocks and blocks away and you walk. That's the beauty of this. I am hoping that our parking lot is full because that means that people are using it and we're, we're making a mark on the map. You know, that may be a good problem. We're trying to balance it out because we want the best of both worlds right now. But there is other parking available that people just don't seem to use. When we have the fair here and when you, we have something or a parade, people park all the way down Croton Falls Road. And, you know, and it just seems like, oh, I can't walk that far. You walk that far. You do, you know? So there is parking available that, that can be, I'm gonna say the overflow per se. You know, and I know Nina has done it down there with the vendors, you know, if they're, don't use the spots up for the vendor parking. Drop all your stuff and then go park elsewhere so the customers can come and park. And that's gonna be thinking outside of the box with recreation or, or someone like that. But I just wanted to let you know that there is also more parking very close by.
Frank, thank you for your comments. And what we're, I don't want to digress into master plan. We're trying to stay where we are in our lane here, but, but the master plan is going to be addressing the business, which unit business, business growth and parking, that, those things have to be done. But that's in the master plan and that's the downtown and revitalization. This is a park. And we're also trying to get the school property, which we're working on. And that is where you do the kayaking now, if you do it with the town. That's where they get launched and that's where the classes are. So we're, we're trying to pick that up as a part of our parks, our recreation in parks. But yes, thank you for your comments and we're, we're conscious of these issues. I just feel that if people have something to come here to say, this being a nice park, I think it'll, you know, cause more people to come where they ride bicycles or motorcycles or take rides in their car and have a place to park, to have a place to walk around to start with at the downtown Mahopac area. And then they can, you know, go off onto the walking trail or they can start visiting some of the businesses. And hopefully this will be the catalyst to start getting the downtown, downtown business districts or, you know, start the revitalization. And we can only do so much as a town here and we can only do so much to help business owners out. But hopefully if they see an increase in, in people coming, they'll put more money into their businesses and, and hopefully it'll just have a domino effect and, you know, things will go in the right direction.
Annie, just wait. Did anybody over here on Row Three want to speak? Okay.
Hello and thank you for the presentation. I'm Lauren Sacks. I'm a member of the community for 50-plus years, part of the Chamber of Commerce, a local Realtor and resident. This is a wonderful asset and because of the changes on Six End, the widening of the sidewalk, losing spaces, more parking will be needed. Also, if there are going to be improvements or tear downs and more structures built or more restaurants, parking will be needed. However, we do want to preserve not only the lake view without building big trees, keeping lower shrubbery, maybe doing parking like the library has where it's not solid asphalt, where it's permeable versus impermeable. These are important things. This is to be light recreation, not to be too active, to be respectful to White Cell on the right and Maypack Point to the left. So we want to preserve this to be clean and quiet and respectful of our neighbors. So, we want to preserve this, to be clean and quiet, and respectful of our neighbors. And thank the gentlemen for bringing up the point about money, and seeing we got rid of a second bridge. We don't need two bridges. We got rid of a fountain. Be careful with how we spend the money, because many of the things that are built, we may not use. It's better sometimes to build the basics, or have them on the plan, and see if it's needed later, especially if we go into a recession. Also, if we go into a recession, it would be very nice to get more tax revenue from better buildings, wider sidewalks, and we're going to have to help merchants by providing parking, or you're going to lose them, and you're going to lose business, and you're going to lose jobs. And we don't want that. So, let's test how it goes before we spend too much money. We have a beautiful gazebo. We're going to have a wonderful bridge. We'll have parking. The bank has worked out an arrangement to preserve their spaces. They're running a business here. So, we have to be respectful of that. And that's all I have to say.
Just Larry, in reference to the issue with the bridges, those three renderings before, those were conceptual, right? Those were just like, "Hey, this is the property. This is what the designer, you know, kind of had in mind." And he presented it to us and the public, and of course, we all felt that, you know, more than one bridge was not necessary, but it was part of the concept that they, the drawings that they rendered. So, that's where that came from.
Anyone in row four?
Oh, oh. Okay. Good evening, everyone. And it feels funny you being on this side of the dais.
Do you want to come up here?
No, I don't. No. Stay up there. I haven't been here in six months, but I wanted to come tonight, because, as you all know, I was very much involved with the negotiations and the purchase of the Swan Cove site. And everyone is correct, some statements were made. If we had not entered into a purchase agreement with that piece of property, it's 220 feet of lakefront in John Lake Mahopac, we would have lost it. We would never have gotten it back, and there were no other sites available that I could see, other than the school property. But there's deed restrictions and limitations on that property as well. So, our fully, our intention was to purchase that property and create a lakeside park for the residents of the town of Carmel, for their use and their families' use. And I just want to thank the board for moving forward with this, because we really need to keep the momentum going. And, you know, I, for one, want to see it built out at some point, and I know that's the intention of the board as well, because it is going to be a beautiful lakeside park once it's built out. And the community is going to love it. They're going to enjoy it, and for years to come. So, I'm very thankful that we have that property. Just one question. I want to come around to the bank parcels. So, the bank parcels were purchased after the purchase of the Swan Cove site. And the reason that we went ahead and purchased the bank parcels, and there was four parcels that were included in that purchase, and that was for the intention of creating municipal parking for the downtown merchants, as Larry had mentioned. For years and years, even pre- before I took office in 2008, the concerns and the complaints that I received was that there was a lack of parking in downtown Mahopac for the business district. And that holds true today. There is a lack of parking. So, I just want to make sure that some of the gray area that's on the, that's on the dais, I'm sorry, on display tonight, is going to be dedicated for municipal parking. And Supervisor Guzzari, you did mention several times that it is a park, it's not a parking lot. Just for clarification, for me and for the public, there is going to be parking there for the merch, for municipal parking, for folks who are looking to patronize the downtown businesses. They can park in that site, correct? That that is part, it is going to be identified as a municipal parking lot? The front part of it, not the lakeside park, but the front part, which were the bank parking parcels that we purchased. The intent was always to create municipal parking, and it was always couched as that. We haven't changed that position on that, correct? It's going to be a municipal parking lot on the front, the front parcels that we purchased from the bank? Could you clarify that?
That's not what I understood, no. I understood it was a park for town residents to utilize and to enjoy the lake and the views. That's the first I was told, that it's a municipal lot.
Oh, no. No. There's board members that are on the dais with you, that knew that we were negotiating with the bank to purchase those parcels from them, to create municipal parking. And the merchants were very pleased to hear that the town was purchasing that property to create additional parking for downtown Mahopac. I just want to make sure that we didn't deviate from that, and that the merchants are going to have additional parking for the customers.
Yeah, so Kenny, from what I understand, I think you guys, I think, are saying the same thing. There's 18 spots, I think it's 18 spots, for the Mahopac Bank customers. I was under the, I was always under the impression, the other spots are open for use. If you're going to the ice cream place, if you're going to the Mexican restaurant down there, and there's no parking that's going to be the parking downtown, there's no parking there, you can come and park here, and then go into the restaurants, or the stores there. I do believe, though, that there's still no overnight parking there. There will not be overnight parking allowed. But I've always been under the impression that if you're coming to use the park itself, you park there. If you're coming to, you go into one of the stores, you can park there. It's not just for a park, it's not just for, like, if you're going to Sycamore Park, you can park there. To me, it's for-
Both.
-the merchants as well. Is that what you're saying?
No. No. What I'm saying is, when we began negotiations with Mahopac Bank, and I was on the negotiating team, along with Councilman Morelli, the intent was always, and you're aware of this, because you were on the board with me, the board members that are there that were when we negotiated, it was to create municipal parking.
I don't think there was communication, really, that went on with the people that negotiated in the board. I'm finding that there wasn't really a good flow of information, you know, going on.
Oh, no. There was good flow. There was good flow. And I don't want to, I'm not going to debate with you, and I'm not going to, I don't want to disagree with you, but if you're going to go away from not creating municipal parking on that site-
Well, there's no, well, if it's a town park, then there's no parking overnight, like Councilman McConaughey says.
That's not the issue. That's not the issue. I'm not talking about that. Every municipality that I know of, most every municipality, has a designated municipal parking lot. And it's called a municipal parking lot to allow for those users of that business district to park their cars in, and it's identified as a municipal parking lot.
Yeah, I don't see that in any of the plan, that it was a municipal parking lot.
Oh, I, it's always been that.
It's not on the final concept at all.
Yes, all that gray-
No, it doesn't say municipal parking lot on it, though.
Well, but, that's, the intent was, it may not say municipal parking on it right now, but the intent of the purchase of the parcels was to create municipal parking for the merchants. Because if we're going to eliminate 22 parking spots, if the diagonal parking goes to parallel parking, you're going to lose 22 parking spaces. You have to shift those somewhere. You can't lose those.
Right, that's why we have the 93.
Right.
Right. So, I personally, I did not buy this property as a municipal parking lot. I did not.
Suzie, you knew all along.
Kenny, wait a minute. No, no, no. I bought this as a park with parking, with parking for downtown parking. So, I mean, to me, it's not a park or a this.
I could show you numerous documents, numerous documents, they all say on it, Swan Cove, municipal parking, and downtown Maya Pac revitalization. Those three have been identified for-
Right, but that's what's here. So, I'm not understanding what the issue is. What is here is all three. There's parking, there's park, right?
So-
So, there is parking there. There is parking, there just no overnight parking. There's not going to be overnight parking, and I also, I mean, we can discuss that later.
You can bring those documents, and we can sit and talk about it.
Yeah, no, it says right on.
But the three-minute rule is now, we're past that, and we're not going to do a back-and-forth, even though it's informational.
I don't want to do that either. I really don't.
No, but bring that stuff, and we'll discuss it.
The merchants, the merchants, and the public need to understand that it will be, the front part of it, which is where the bank parcels were, will be used for municipal parking. Can we agree with that?
Well, Kenny-
Or we're not going to agree with that?
So, you saying that we would just take this little piece here, and the only people are allowed there to park there are people that are, that was never, that was not in the plan?
All right. Real quick, and I'll wrap it up.
No, 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 no. No, it's, I'm sorry, Ken, I'm sorry. With due respect, it's past three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to continue this.
Absolutely.
All right? Because this isn't going to end here.
Absolutely.
It's being deceptive, it's being deceptive to the public, to the merchants, by you not calling it a municipal parking lot, which is wrong.
Ken, if it was written on your final thing, then it was-
It's been written for years, we've been talking about it.
Where is it written?
For years, we've been talking about a municipal parking lot.
It's not on the final concept. The three minutes, you come in, bring your stuff, and we'll talk about it. Absolutely. You're welcome anytime to come and talk.
I just want to ask one more thing.
No. No, I'm sorry.
You don't want to give courtesy to a former supervisor to ask one question?
You had more than three minutes.
Okay, all right. Cut me off. I'll be back.
After the meeting, you can stay, and we can discuss the whole thing.
I want the public to hear.
No, no more.
The public's here.
No.
And I want the people at home to hear what's going on here. You're not allowing me to do that. That's wrong.
Okay.
With all due respect.
All due respect, you had more than ample time.
Another question I wanted to ask the engineer, and you cut me off. It's an important question. It'll take two minutes for me to answer.
What's your question?
Do you allow me to ask?
Yep. Go ahead. It's an engineering question.
It is. Okay. Rich, the RFP that went out for the design, and the, did it include construction cost estimates?
Yes.
It did. All right, and when does that do back? I know you said it earlier, but can you-
Mid-July.
...your projection for the concept plan improvement. Will know each one of those line items, what it involves.
Okay. Second part of my question is, does the RFP include, does the RFP, it's to the engineer, does the RFP include-
No. You did your, you did your extra question.
Does it include Swan Cove, the municipal parking lot, and the downtown widening of the sidewalks and lighting, et cetera? Does it include all of that? That's my final question.
So, to answer the question, and so that the public is aware, the RFP that's out there is available to look at on our webpage, I believe. If not, we can get you a copy of it through the town clerk, and we can get an electronic copy to you. Yes, it includes downtown Maya Pac lighting, sidewalk, and parking reconfiguration, Chamber Park and municipal parking, proposed parking, municipal parking, Cherry Lane modifications.
That's the answer. You just said, I'm sorry. You just said municipal parking.
Well, so, again, again, that's the definition, municipal parking. I don't want to override with the board, but my, as an engineer, municipal parking means, we own that piece of property. If a car parks there, it's municipal parking. Whether they use it for going and going for a walk around the lake, or if they want to go to a restaurant, if a car parks there, it's municipal parking. We own the land, that's municipal, municipal, this is a municipal parking lot right outside here. Anybody can park here. And use this parking lot, it's a municipal parking lot.
Why are we afraid to call it?
I'm not arguing with that.
Thank you, Rich, for the clarification.
Anyone else on row one, two, three, four? No, row five?
I have a question.
Yep, row five.
No, I don't need that.
No, you need it, because the public wouldn't be able to hear you.
They might be silly questions, but as far as this kayak storage area, is that going to be town-owned kayaks? Or town residents going to store their kayaks there?
Town-owned kayaks.
And if for rent? Are they going to rentals?
They are, yes. You would go through the Recreation Department.
Okay. And this bathroom building? Bathrooms will be locked after park closes, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay. Now, if I decide to go to the park and walk to a store, am I going to get my chops broken? Because Minister Schmidt seems worried about that.
No.
No.
There's no meters, there's no, it's not a municipal lot with meters or anything like that.
You know, we seem, we seem to be stuck on mic on titles or names. The whole entire parking lot area is a municipal, is a municipal-
Frank, I'm not worried about the parking.
No, no, no. And I didn't mean it to, I just, I'm trying to still process the last, you know, the entire parcel where you can park your car is a municipal lot.
If I park there, it's a park? When I park there, it's a parking lot?
You can park there now. It's owned by the town.
Next question?
I just have a question about the kayak, Lauren. She said that's just for Carmel residents only?
Well, the people, non-residents, I believe, can use our park facilities, but you have to get, what is it called?
Like a permit or something?
You're paying additional fee?
Yes.
You're paying additional fee?
Non-residents can pay an additional fee to use our, any of our parks.
Are they doing that with a sticker to regulate that?
You get a card.
Resident versus non-resident?
Right?
We haven't worked out the details on that.
Yeah. Yeah. But what, for the, for the-
Wait, we haven't gotten that far yet.
No, that's I get it.
Yeah.
We have to come up with a plan to make sure that it's residents, of course, first only, for the kayak launch and what.
So, you're going to regulate that with some sort of sticker?
Yes, well, the Recreation, the Recreation Department is going to come up with what they feel is best for that, just like they do with Sycamore, or the lake, the school property. Okay? They're going to come up with it. It's not our task, you know, we're letting them come up with it. So, it'll be residents. If you're not a resident, they're going to come up with whatever system they're going to come up with to permit that.
Because right now, people are just going there. It's a little Wild, Wild West right now. They just launch their boats.
Yes, because, because right now, there's nothing in place.
And it's not just kayaks they're putting out there as well.
Correct.
I guess you're from Parks?
Yes, that's Jimmy Gilchrist, the director.
There's been a problem with geese.
Yeah, wait, so, we're talking, you can talk to Jimmy afterwards. This is on the park.
Yeah.
Okay, which is- Okay, which is. About that. Thank you. Um, row one, two, three, four, five, six. Or, or maybe still row five, Craig. I don't know what row you guys are in. Okay. What, what, the last row, I'll say.
Did somebody here want to speak? Well, he's row six. Okay.
I'll take mine, I'll take it real quick. I just wanted to comment real quick. Steven, nice work on the, I remember back in the, back in the late 60s and early 70s when the, uh, when the, um, property came up for, um, for Four Brothers. I couldn't, I just couldn't believe that.
I think my, my memory, it was 1964, I think. And the reason why I remember is my dad was a Falls fireman. And when the hotel burned down, it was like the biggest fire in Putnam County history. And I think that night, uh, my dad took me and my brothers up there on the hill and we were kind of, we were watching the activity. So, anyway, a little bit, a little bit of local lore.
So, my father was a Falls fireman as well, so. But I do, but there have been opportunities over the, over the years. You know, you watch the, you watch anything around the lake, even when the Dean House was torn down, bang, all the, you know, so we lost all our opportunities. So, I applaud the, you know, the, I applaud the town board and the, you know, in, in, in acquiring the property. You know, the, the bigger issue, the bigger issue is, it's a, it, the concept's great. Um, I do know a lot about the kayakers. I think, I think the kayaking component, I think, in all honesty, should probably stay over at the school property. Um, having the fishing to, um, I'm sorry, what was the gal's name up over here? She had a very, very good point about the, about the fishing and the kayaking. Uh, you're always over there, you're going to be using bobs quite a bit and some other things. They do get, they do get tangled quite a bit. So, so I would, I would really pursue having a really robust, you know, kayak area, because I think it's safer out of the school property because you can head down the, down the sides over there. I do see when people are putting in now, even on Sundays at the, um, at the farmer's market, when people are in there, you know, that's a, that, that cove gets, it gets, it gets, a lot of boats are turning in there and there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of waves going in. Not to say that there's not waves on the other side, but it seems like off the school property, it just seems, and maybe Nina can, can comment on that, it just seems like it's a little safer because you can get down towards the, um, uh, towards the church, um, towards the church property. And then that cove down over there where it's very rocky, not too many boats go down there, but it's excellent area for kayaking. So, I, I think the school property is probably an answer because the other thing too is that you'll find that more people, as it gets popular, as this gets built out, more people will find an opportunity to come there and they'll, they'll park there for, you know, for hours and hours and go out and enjoy, you know, enjoy the lake, as well they should. But, you know, you might not, it might not be five or six cars. It could be, you know, as it catches, catches in popularity, it could be as much as 20, you know, 20 cars, 25 cars. And then you're starting to, you know, then you're starting to have cars there for the, you know, for, for the day. So, that was the one point. The other thing is to, to this gentleman's point over here, these, these, a project like this can always be phased in as well. You know, there, you, you can go through certain phases and, you know, and, and take projects over a, you know, and, and plan, budget and direct over a, over a course of time. Because there's obviously going to be some dredging that's going on over there. Those inlets are all, are all filled up with, uh, you know, with, uh, stuff. And it's not surprising that you have the leads and the, and the, and the arsenates in the soil over there because it's a, it's a, it's a flood area. Um, it's a, it's a cove. You get a lot of runoff from all the construction over the lake that pockets in those coves, plus the runoff from, um, you know, from here, you know, from up, from up high, up, up on the ridge, coming down. So, you're always going to have those types of things over there. So, it's not uncommon to have, you know, those types of deposits, you know, in the area. So, but I think I applaud the, I, I applaud the, the town board. The, the concept is, is, is right there. I think it's wonderful. I think it'll be a, a welcome, um, it'll be a welcome park, uh, and opportunity for the town, uh, from not only this point, but for generations to come. So, congratulations and let's hopeful, hopefully the numbers come in and, uh, and they're workable. So, in any case, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, Craig Paper. I totally agree with everything you said there. I thought you made some good points enough that I wanted to come back and say a few things. The phase approach, I brought this up before, and I think, I think there's an opportunity for, because Swan Cove in my mind is going to be very complicated with the permitting and getting something done. But I would love to, I think the town would love to see, because I, I'm under chair, Chairman of the Planning Board, I guess, asked a lot of questions, what's going on downtown. I would love to see something, I wouldn't call a low-line through, it's not that easy, but the sidewalks done, Cherry Lane done, as with developing Swan Cove. I think Swan Cove could take three, four, or five years. I don't know, right? With all permitting, Rich would know better than I. But I don't think the widening of the sidewalks and the lighting and Cherry Lane will take nearly as much time. So, I just wanted to, to diddle what you said and, and thank everybody for all the work here.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig.
Come on, row six, let's go.
Hi, Bob Fakel. My question relates to financing. Uh, New York State has a program called the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, which provides grant money. If memory serves, it's 50 cents for every dollar that is spent. Is there a plan to apply for this grant? Because it seems tailor-made for Swan Cove.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we, we actually have applied for it. I don't believe we got anything. Yeah, we, we've applied for it actually quite a few times over several years. Um, even prior boards, we've always applied for it. And so, for some reason, um, we have not gotten anything, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Well, we have lines of communication open with, uh, um, our state senator. And he put us in touch with Senator Schumer's office to help us with, uh, the other grants for the dams and all the water projects and things we need. Uh, we're, we're really getting help from our local senator. He's, uh, actually been good to the town.
But, but this grant is specific for waterfronts?
Right, yes, we, we have applied for that.
Supervisor Schmidt applied for that a couple of times in his 14 years.
Yeah, yeah, we've applied for, like I said, numerous times where we had the drawings, we had sidewalks right on the lake. We had all projects around the lake and every single time, it's like a big stamp, denied. You know, Town of Carmel, sorry, denied.
So, we're working, our Senator Harkam and, and our federal representatives trying to get more, um, out of them, you know. And if we could embarrass Maloney that make him give us money, because he gave money to Putnam Valley and somebody else. Who was it?
Lewis Burrow.
Lewis Burrow and Southeast. And we, we were completely left out. Interfaces with the grant writer. And we, we have them reapplying to grants, giving them more information. We're, we're working, uh, every avenue that we can from.
For the grants.
From the grants. We're pushing, we're pushing it.
And, and we will continue, just because we were denied multiple times, we will keep on, keep on continuing to put in for those specific grants. Yes, we're not going to stop.
And I think the design, when we come up with the design plan, that'll be, um, very helpful to us when we apply for these grants because the grant, people who are funding the, the money will see exactly what we want to do with it. Uh, there's also Greenway, um, grants that we were trying to connect the park with the walking trail and the, and the, um, the water grant also, so. I think we should be adding something.
Hi, Marie Frankel. So, um, I, we came in a little bit late and I know you were talking about the remediation and buried oil tank and things like that. Does the, is there any remediation, uh, from the bank or anything like that regarding the contracts? If you have a buried oil tank or something like that, is there any?
Well, the oil tank is on the bank's property, so, uh, they're, they're going to, they're going to take care of that. That's on them, yes.
Okay. And then, um, I know you were talking about, um, you know, art money, because the Town of Carmel, I mean, the numbers that I saw at one point were like $3.5 billion that the town is being allocated. So, I mean, that's a lot of money, but I mean, obviously, there's projects all around. Also, there's the infrastructure plan that was passed last year or two, so I don't know if any of that applies. I know it applies to some, I think to schools, they can do it. I don't know if it's for towns. And then, uh, let's see. Oh, when you talk about the, um, the kayaking area for the school, I'm sorry, when you talk about the kayaking, the school property, does the school own it? Do we pay rent? I'm, I'm just a little confused as to how that works.
Okay, so.
And where do they park? Is there parking there for those people to do the kayaking?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's $7 million that came from the feds that the state of New York is going to divvy up for, um, the different projects. I believe, uh, a lot of it is for dam work, which Senator Harkam, you know, just notified us that that's going to be in the fall. So, I don't know if we're going to get any federal money, but we, the town has had a grant writer, I think, three years now. And, uh, we're, you know, that's their job is to help us get that money. And as far as, uh, the school property right now, I don't think.
That's part of the lease.
Yeah, we, we, we pay, uh, the school an amount of money every year to use their facilities. Uh, currently, we have a contract with them to, uh, to get a, we have an agreement with them to get appraisals so that we can transition into buying that lakefront property. There is parking on that piece of property. Uh, you open up the fence and you can park there. So, yes.
And I know it's, I guess it's related to master plan, but I know we keep talking about getting other businesses.
Could you, could you do that?
Okay. I know we talk about other businesses, but there never seems to be anything other than nail salons, laundromats, real estate agents, a few restaurants. I mean, we need some retail. We need something that people can shop, people can, you know, you want people to walk through the town. Um, you know, you, you talk about Coal Springs and stuff. I mean, we have nothing to attract that type of peo, person who wants to come around and walk. There's no little boutiques, there's nothing. So, I mean, one of the things.
That's all part of, that's all part of the master plan.
Right, but one of the things that, um, we used to have, and I know it wasn't in our town, but Home Goods was a, was a big home financing, furnishing type of place. And that was relatively close in Somers. And now that is gone.
I know.
And there is nothing for people in the community from like Carmel all the way down. And there are other companies like, um, Tuesday Morning or things like that. There's that big space next to, that's been open a very long time, next to the Odd Job or Dollar Lot, whatever that is there. Like, I don't know why we don't try to bring something like that in. Um, there's just, I don't know, there's so much empty space and there's, it just seems so little is being done. And it's been years, I mean, we've been here seven years and everyone's talking about, you know, revitalization and nothing happens, so.
Well, I just, I just got here in January, so I'm working on it. So, just give me, give me, you've been here seven years. Give me a couple of days to work it out and I'll, I will do my best, okay?
Can I address a couple of those?
Oh, please, go ahead.
One of, you know, a lot of people, Ms. Frankel.
What happened?
Can I just, just, can I just address something that you said? The thing with the, with the retail stores, you know, we can ask them all to come here, but the fact of the matter is that they do their due diligence into where they want to be, into the traffic that goes up and down the main corridor, into the median income of a community, into all, everything else. So, we can ask store A a zillion times, hey, come to Carmel, come to Mayapack, come to the Hamlet, come to, they've done their homework already. And what, that's why you saw Home Goods leave, because they realized that they get a better group, a better bank for their buck down in Cortland, more traffic down there, and that's why they left Somers. So, so I think hopefully with this kind of project, this park, it may go into their calculation, into their due diligence about what does the Town of Carmel attract and will it attract more potential clients for them? So, this way, they can come into our town and want to be here because it'll just add to their, the homework that they do as to, hey, yes, it's financially beneficial for us to be in the Town of Carmel. So, you know, for years, everybody was like, oh, Target should come here, Target should come here. They don't want to come here. I, I, I'm being honest with you. Because they've done their homework and said, hey, there's not enough traffic, there's not enough, whatever they determine, they just determined that they, for whatever reason, they want to be here. But hopefully, something like this will be a, an attraction that they can say, hey, you know what? They have this, this park down there, which is attractive and a lot of people to it, a lot more traffic coming through in terms of people wanting to be there. Maybe that'll attract, you know, hopefully that'll go into the calculation.
We need more residents. That's also the bottom line. There's, you know, so many people live here. If, if building was expanded, um, part of the master plan, if they allow different zoning for different type of housing, so we can get more young families here, there'd be more traffic and there'll be more need to shop. If you just go around and look at some of the shopping centers, look at the Putnam Plaza or the plaza across the street, there's numerous empty stores. People aren't shopping because there's just not enough people there to shop.
So, did, did we finish with row six? Okay.
Anybody else have comments, uh, or questions about?
Regarding shopping, regarding business, we.
Well, we're, we're off topic, though.
Yeah, that's, we will, we will.
Let's just stick to Swan Cove.
Well, no, this just has to do with, we lost the parking on 6N. And when it was originally discussed, where is this parking going to be replaced? That's why it became an integral part of Swan Cove. And going through the master plan, which Suzy, Jonathan Schneider, Tom I sat with for years, how are we going to attract business? And part of it is Swan Cove providing easy parking so people can easily frequent the stores.
Well, you have your other parking lot that you suggested too, that there's other places that we could.
There's a whole bunch of puzzle pieces that, that we're trying to put together. Unfortunately, it is taking forever. I think I may be six feet under by the time it goes, but, you know, I'm not going to stop because if, if you don't continue and if you don't start it, it will never happen. My grandbabies will be here and say, oh my God, what did anybody do? Just like we're saying, why didn't they do this way before? Well, at least we're doing something. It's taking forever, but at least we're doing it. And we're hoping for the best outcome for all of the residents in the Town of Carmel.
But Larry, as a Realtor, this is prime location for a park. The other, the other parking play, opportunities are not on the water, which, you know. They lend themselves to a parking lot instead of somebody developing and putting another building on it, so.
Oh, we want to keep it a park. And this, the plan here is a function of Suzy, Jonathan, and I saying, we need the parking in the front for the businesses. In the master plan, if these storefronts are changed and we have wide sidewalks and people want to come and eat and dine, you need parking for them.
Yes.
And if there are positive changes, you will need parking. And we're thinking forward, unlike Connecticut, which has 84, which becomes a parking lot. They build it, then 10, 20 years later, they put the infrastructure in. We're trying to get ahead of it. So, thank you for doing that.
But, but there are locations that we could make a municipal parking lot and would be not taken away from the beauty of the lake. Yeah. So, uh, if there's no one else, thank you very much for, you know, giving us. So, uh, if there's no one else, thank you very much for, you know, giving us the time to answer your questions. Can I get a motion to close?
Second. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I think the school parking, we have to.
I think we did have a dot.